Good evening all. I'm Carolyn Wright, Chair of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach, and I hereby call this meeting to order at 6 o'clock PM on this 22nd day of March 2022. We welcome those joining us in person this evening as well as our viewing and listening public. The public, as always, is able to observe this meeting through live streaming on vbschools.com, broadcast on VBTV Channel 47, and on Zoom. With that, Madam Clerk, would you please announce those board members in attendance?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Present in school board chambers is Chairwoman Wright, Vice Chair Melnick, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Felton, Ms. Franklin, Ms. Holtz, Ms. Hughes, Ms. Manning, and Ms. Riggs.
Thank you. And we have Ms. Owens absent this evening for personal reasons and Mrs. Weems for personal health reasons. So I now ask all those present to join me with a moment of silence. And please stand as you are able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I now turn the program over, the meeting, over to Vice Chair Melnick for our presentation of Employee and Public Awards.
Tonight, for the first time in a very long time, we are excited to host our School Board Recognitions in Person. On behalf of the Board, I am happy to extend a warm welcome to all of our honorees and their guests this evening. Thank you for, all of you, for joining us tonight as we announce the School Board Recognition recipients for March 22nd, 2022. Mrs. Riggs?
This year, the School Division is proudly adding eight additional National Board Certified Teachers to the group of teachers who have earned this stellar certification. Including these eight, the Division now recognizes 167 teachers that hold this distinction, which is the fifth highest in Virginia. Nationally, the Commonwealth ranks ninth for total number of MBCTs. I ask you to please hold any applause until we are done with the recognition, since we will highlight the honors of each recipient after their name is read. Let's welcome the Division's most recent honorees. Charlene Barrow, a 4th grade teacher at Red Mill Elementary School, received National Board Certification in the area of Exceptional Needs Specialists for Early Childhood Through Young Adulthood. Dawn Brown, a 5th grade teacher at North Landing Elementary School, received National Board Certification in the area of Generalist for Middle Childhood. Chiwag Chaya, a science teacher at Princess Anne High School, received National Board Certification in the area of Science for Adolescence and Young Adulthood. Kristy Flanagan, a kindergarten teacher at Salem Elementary School, received National Board Certification in the area of Generalist for Early Childhood. Jacqueline McGuire Day, a library media specialist at Lynn Haven Elementary School, received National Board Certification in the area of Library Media for Early Childhood Through Young Adulthood. Megan Richardson, a social studies teacher at Plaza Middle School, received National Board Certification in the area of Social Studies and History for Early Adolescence. Amy Ricks, library media specialist at Brandon Middle School, received National Board Certification in the area of Library Media for Early Childhood Through Young Adulthood. Julia Schwinki, an English teacher at Floyd E. Kellum High School, received National Board Certification in the area of English Language Arts for Adolescence and Young Adulthood. According to the National Board for Professional Teaching Standards, this certification is the most respected professional certification available in K-12 education. Created by teachers for teachers, National Board Certification is a voluntary certification system based on high and rigorous standards for what accomplished teachers should know and be able to do. It takes anywhere from three to five years to complete. Candidates are required to demonstrate their mastery of content knowledge, provide a portfolio demonstrating how they differentiate instruction based on student needs, provide videos of their teaching in action, and submit a portfolio demonstrating evidence that they are effective and reflective practitioners. Congratulations to all of our National Board Certified Teachers. This is a wonderful accomplishment, especially when you think they accomplished this in the middle of a pandemic. We are so proud to have each of you. Let me finish that last sentence. We are so proud to have each of you as a staff member with our division. Thank you.
For our, for our final recognition this evening, we would like to honor and welcome Adonis Latimore. On Saturday, February 19th, Landstown High School senior Adonis Latimore became a VHSL Group Six Wrestling State Champion in the 106-pound weight class by beating his opponent in the wrestling finals with a score of 5 to 1. This win sealed his fate as a Virginia State Wrestling Champion. Although this is his first state win, Adonis is no stranger to wrestling, and his long wrestling journey started while he was in 2nd grade. Then, after starting 8th grade, he wrote down a goal 20 times. That goal was to win a state wrestling championship. Over the years, he continued to work diligently to achieve his goal. He was a regional qualifier as a freshman but didn't qualify for the tournament in his sophomore year. Then COVID-19 forced the cancellation of wrestling last year. However, this year, he earned a spot in the finals by coming from behind in the semifinal round by scoring a two-point takedown with seven seconds left in the match, which ultimately led to win, led him to win 4 to 3. This season, he finished 32 to 7. Adonis is described as kind, a team player, a great wrestler, and a hard worker. Ultimately, his own quote seems to serve as the best reminder of encouragement and perseverance. You can do anything, even win a state championship without legs. Mr. Latimore, we are unbelievably impressed with your tenacity and drive. Congratulations to you on this tremendous accomplishment. Well done. We are, yep, and we are excited to see what great things hold, your future holds, yeah. And again, congratulations, Mr. Latimore, and all of our National Board Certified Teachers recognized this evening. This concludes the recognitions for this meeting. Thank you.
All right, that brings us to adoption of tonight's agenda. So, consistent with the email I sent to my colleagues, we have two modifications. Removal of Action Item 12C, the new course proposal, Data Science. We're going to postpone that. And an adjustment of Information Item 12C to Note Journalism 4 rather than Journalism 5. Are there any additional modifications? The posted, these are adjustments to the posted agenda. I apologize. All right, so hearing no other modifications, a motion to approve. Mrs. Holtz and a second, Mrs. Riggs, all in favor, show a raised hand.
The motion passed with nine ayes.
Thank you. And now we have the Superintendent's Report, Dr. Spence.
We do. Thank you, Madam Chair. So, good evening, and good evening to you and members of the Board. Here are a few items of interest for you and our families to know. To begin, as a friendly reminder, spring break will start early next month. It's beginning with an Adjusted Dismissal Day on Friday, April the 8th, and that will continue through the following week from April 11th through the 15th. Students will come back to school on Monday, April 18th, and we'll begin our fourth and final quarter of the school year, if you can believe it. Additionally, please be sure to check the Division's website to view and download the Board approved school calendars for both of the 2022-23 and the 2023-24 school years. Next, throughout March, we highlighted Procurement Appreciation Day and Human Resources Appreciation Day. Both of those inaugural days were created to highlight the hard-working staff that makes up the Budget Business Services, Internal Audit, Purchasing, Human Resources, Benefits, and Wellness Departments and Offices. These staff members all work together to ensure many integral pieces for the Division are in place and running smoothly, including the Division's school budgets, purchasing staffing, employee relations, election of benefits, retirement support, and so much more. And none of us would be here as employees without their work, and I mean that literally, in the case of Human Resources. Without their work, neither our Division's staffing nor our financial needs would be met. And I thank every staff member who works in these departments and offices for all of this and more. Please know your work does not go unnoticed, and I thank each and every one of you for showing up every day to ensure the children of our city get the absolute best we can provide. If you haven't had an opportunity to thank these folks, it's not too late. When you see them or if you think of them, just offer a verbal thanks, write a quick card, or share a quick post on, on social media thanking them for their hard work and dedication every day. Also this month, alongside the Virginia Department of Education, our Division has highlighted National School Breakfast Week, which aims to remind the entire school community that school breakfast provides a healthy and an energizing start to the day for our students. In honor of this important week, I'm proud to mention that two of our food service staff members have been recognized with awards related to their work in keeping with the nutritional needs, of meeting the nutritional needs of our students. First, I'm proud to recognize Barbara Donikoff, who won the School Nutrition Association's Employee of the Year Award for our Virginia Beach Fore-Each Chapter. Currently, she is a baker-cook at Kellum High School, but she began her food services career with VBCPS in 2013 as cafeteria assistant. She frequently assists with the Food Service Department events. She's part of the Kellum Yearbook Celebration and was also honored with a Tag by the Superintendent Award. Next, I'm also happy to honor Bonnie Gasset, Cafeteria Manager from Landstown High School. Bonnie was awarded two different awards this month. One through the School Nutrition Association for Manager of the Year for our Virginia Beach Chapter, and a second award through the Virginia Department of Education's Virginia Breakfast Club. The Breakfast Club awards five schools and their staffs for initiatives surrounding the expansion of breakfast access to students, prioritizing the nutritional integrity of foods offered and serving more scratch-cooked local foods. When food services leadership staff were asked to recognize the school as a breakfast champion, Landstown High School was immediately considered due to their tremendous increase in student breakfast participation, which went from about 160 meals a day at the start of school to about 430 meals per day currently, which could not have happened without Bonnie and her team and everyone at Landstown High School. She began her food service career as a cafeteria assistant at Diamond Springs Elementary and then became manager at Hermitage Elementary before being promoted to the manager at Landstown High School position. In addition, she's also currently the president of the Local School Nutrition Association here in Virginia Beach. So, wonderful job to both of these ladies and to the food service staff teams at their schools. The work each of you does daily to, to feed students directly influences them, and all of them are better for having you as a staff member to support their needs. Congratulations to them. As a division, next, as a division, we also continue to focus on meeting the needs of all students, and in support of that effort, the Virginia Beach Education Foundation is holding a Beach Bags Food Drive on Thursday, March 24th, at Pembroke Mall in the Kohl's Parking Lot from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM. The Beach Bags Program provides meals and healthy snacks to students who may not have enough to eat over weekends and school holidays. Please consider visiting the Beach Bags tent to make a donation of shelf-stable milk, cereal, oatmeal, or meals such as macaroni and cheese or ravioli. Tax-deductible contributions can also be made on-site or by visiting www.vbef.org. For more information or to donate to the program, call our Office of Family and Community Engagement at 757-263-1949. Also happening this Thursday, March 24th, we hope you'll please consider joining us over Zoom from 6:00 to 7:00 PM for our Virtual Family Connection Series as a part of the 3E Series Enlist. In this session, participants will hear from representatives from different military branches about how to best be prepared to enlist in the military after graduating from high school. This session will be most relevant for families of students in grades 9 through 12. Please make sure to register in advance for this webinar by visiting vbschools.com. After registering, you will receive a confirmation email containing information about joining the webinar. And finally, I'm happy to highlight Skyla Assadi, who won WHRO's 2022 Regional Spelling Bee. Skyla, whose family and friends call her Parto, is an 8th grader at Great Neck Middle School. To become champion, she competed against 36 middle school students from across the local region, and after a close competition, took first place. This regional win will allow her to compete against more than 200 other Spelling Bee champions from across the country at the Scripps National Spelling Bee, which will take place the week of Memorial Day in National Harbor, Maryland. Parto said she felt a bit hesitant at first about competing in the Spelling Bee, since English is not her first language, but her confidence grew as she went along. She also said she's always wanted to compete in a Spelling Bee, since she has a passion for learning different words from different languages. She's also fluent in Farsi and is also learning French. I encourage everyone to cheer her on by following her journey online or on television by watching the Scripps National Spelling Bee. So, congratulations again, and know we are all rooting you on and sending you the best of luck in this upcoming National Spelling Bee competition. Madam, yep. And Madam Chair, that does conclude my report.
Thank you, Dr. Spence. And as always, congratulations to all. So, now, approval of meeting minutes from March 8th, 2022, regular school board meeting. Are there any modifications to these minutes? All right, hearing none, a motion to approve. Mrs. Hughes and a second, Mrs. Anderson, all in favor, show a raised hand, please.
Madam Chair, we have nine ayes. The motion did pass.
Thank you. Okay, the School Board will now hear public comments on matters relevant to pre-K to 12 public education in Virginia Beach and the business of the School Board and School Division from citizens and delegations who signed up with the School Board Clerk prior to noon today. Persons not called to the podium to address the School Board are asked to be respectful of speakers so that the Board and persons observing the meeting are able to hear and observe each speaker's comments. Persons signed up to speak will be called up three at a time. For speakers who are outside of school board chambers, staff will bring those into the hallway to line up. In-person speakers will be called first, followed by student speakers. Followed by, I'm sorry, stu-, well, we have none through Zoom tonight, so we'll move on. Each speaker should begin speaking once their name is called. As a reminder, each speaker has three minutes to present and will be given a 30-second warning before time expires. The time clock begins running once the speaker's at the podium. Speakers are asked to refer to the timeline tracker to keep track of their time, and once time has expired, the speaker is asked to stop making remarks and leave the podium to allow the next speaker, speaker queue to speak. Speakers are responsible for being in chambers when called. If a speaker is not present, the School Board, at its sole discretion, may allow the speaker to speak at the end of the public comment session. Members of the audience will not be recognized to assist an online speaker with making online comments. As always, the School Board invites the public to submit comments through our group email account, which can be found on our website. And Madam Clerk, would you please introduce our first speaker of the evening?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our first speaker will be Dan Chang, then Carol Kinsey, then Amber Thompson.
Welcome.
Hi, this is Wright. First of all, I'd like to say Happy Military Children's Month, having been one before. I'm sure there is a lot of recognition for these children. I'm discussing the behavior of the School Board members and how they are not policed or corrected by the Chair. Members as elected officials should be held to a higher standard by themselves and by the Chair. School Board members are expected to work to a code of ethical and professional conduct, one which they all signed. Here's the code right now, as signed by all members excluding, all members of the Board. The code requires that members serve with, and I quote, "with integrity and fairness, and to listen respectfully to input, including different opinions and ideas, while maintaining personal, professional decorum, and to treat community members," and I quote, "without disparagement." The Chair is required to resolve any issues with a member that violates the code. When violations of these codes by members of the Board were presented to Chair Wright recently, her response was a dismissive statement that the School Board Code was merely aspirational. Merely aspirational. Yet Chair Wright does not consider the bylaws for the public to be merely aspirational. Instead, she wields the bylaws as a weapon against parents and members of the public who offer differing ideas and opinions while attempting to silence them. This is a total violation of the School Board Code. Recently, Ms. Wright signed her name to another document, a letter barring a parent, Ms. Annie Palumbo, from speaking here at a school board in person, falsely claiming that Ms. Palumbo was a threat at the last school board meeting, ignoring her comments when she was speaking that she felt threatened in the hallway. Chair Wright also ignored completely that a VBCPS employee was seen to rise from her chair in what could be interpreted as a physical threat to Ms. Palumbo. Ms. Palumbo was targeted and taunted in the hall by another speaker and mocked by a school board member in the chamber. All okay with Chair Wright, though as School Board decorum is merely aspirational, the bylaws are only applied to some parents and citizens who attend meetings. Ms. Palumbo is not a physical threat to anyone in this room. She is a, she is a threat to the aspiration of the Board and Aaron Spence and their goal, goals to successfully bring attention to issues like forced massing and pornography. I'm reminded by when John Hancock signed the Declaration of Independence. As you can see, he signed his name largely and proudly because he's a man of integrity and is following that, that document. Your signature on this code is tiny, Ms. Wright. What does that stand for your integrity and how you apply this code?
Our next speaker is Carol Kinsey, then Amber Thompson, and then Paula Chang.
Good evening. Oh, my goodness. That's the nicest thing I can say right now regarding the online English textbooks, grades 6 through 12, which are up for adoption for a cost of $2 million. Parents, I hope that you have reviewed this curriculum because it's more like a family life manual of sexual activity with biased and proven false information, as well as a promotion of radicals who support socialism and Marxism. Let's see if the Virginia SOLs align with this curriculum called Actively Learn. Some 6th grade SOLs are: The student will read and learn unfamiliar words and phrases, demonstrate comprehension, write narratives, and edit. Actively Learn: The student reads articles praising Islam, diminishing Christianity, discussing oral sex, and smoking pot. That's Unit 8. Some 7th grade SOLs comprehend nonfiction, identify main idea, cause and effect, and inferences. Actively Learn: Supplies information that is politically false, promotes progressive agendas, diminishes our history, suggests children should be more aggressive, advances one political party over another, and inspires to be more like RuPaul, a drag queen. Unit 7: There's a poem which I will not share due to its sexually explicit content. Some 8th grade SOLs: Apply writing skills, review literature through, draw conclusions. Actively Learn: Advocates for reparations, presents slanted liberal views, points a biased view, whites against blacks. 9th through 12th: Actively Learn has themes of Marxism and Communism and promotes its activists, promotes white people as racist, and wants students to think beyond capitalism. This curriculum has additional resources which discusses puberty and other sexual functions. And then there are the polls, which ask students about guns in their houses.
30 seconds.
Parents monitoring their phones and preferred pronouns. So I ask you, are you supplying our students with the goals and tools for success in English, as you say you are, or are you charting a course of bias, division, overstepping, and sexualized grooming?
Our next speaker is Amber Thompson, then Paula Chang, then Tara Chang.
Good evening.
Good evening. First, I'd like to address why we are still following COVID mitigation guidelines during the lunch hour for our children. Per your last update, lunch schedules and seating arrangements would remain allowing for distancing, as well as no parent visitation during the lunch hour. Just curious as to why we're still doing that. Every other restriction or guideline has been lifted throughout the district, and I believe with my calculations, the numbers have decreased over 98% since January. On top of that, schools have been allowing, or excuse me, following your district guidelines of no outside food, which means we cannot send in any treats for the kids. This may seem miniscule to you all, but it's a little bit bigger, you know, to our children. It's been two years now. We're just asking to bring in some store-bought cupcakes to celebrate birthdays. Next, I'd like to touch yet again on School Board decorum and your relationship with the public. Recently, you made the decision to ban a parent from attending school board meetings, as well as, excuse me, speaking in person. The basis for this decision was a continuing pattern of misconduct. I have attended and watched countless meetings. If the basis is some voice raising during this parent's three minutes of speaking time, then I can't imagine what standards this Board is held to. Let me read you some quotes from your board members on social media recently. Beverly Anderson stated in regards to this parent, "Let's be clear, she is not a victim of the School Board any more than Putin is a victim of Zelensky. She has an attitude very similar to Putin and acts like she knows what is best for our students, just like Putin thinks he knows what is best for Ukraine. How completely inappropriate this statement is to begin with, but to diminish that this parent doesn't know what's best for her child is asinine. If you are to make this comparison, then by banning this parent, are you silencing your opposition, just like Hitler did? See how ridiculous that sounds?" There are some others from Dottie Holtz. I've read them before. One of them, I have never heard of the books until a lot of Karens asked for them to be banned. Another response to a parent via email, "Dear Tim, did you read the entire book or just an excerpt? Did you not get over your failed run for office?" She has also been caught calling parents crazy, intentionally deaf, the minority, among other statements. On top of this behavior, board members like Ms. Melnick, Anderson, and Riggs sit up there smiling and whispering while parents speak. You wonder why there is some voice raising when you sit there practically taunting parents. Due to Board rules, you are not able to speak during public comment, but that doesn't justify going online portraying far worse behavior. You portray parents so badly and falsely while falling back on this moral high ground because you sit there quietly during a school board meeting.
30 seconds.
That will only get you so far. In closing, if you live in District 2 or District 10, I just would like to encourage you to vote for Amy Soleris or Kathleen Brown for School Board come November. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Paula Chang, Tara Chang, and then Sarah Gerloff.
Good evening.
Thank you. Ms. Anderson, he's not doing what he thinks is best for Ukraine. He's doing what he thinks is best for Russia. I just want to clarify that with you. And regarding the book that Ms. Kinsey felt uncomfortable to mention, I will say, I've been through the curriculum too. That was a book for 6th graders that talked about, oh, the poem, "Do you, do you, are my, are you bothered by my sexuality? I have diamonds in my thighs," for 6th graders. Okay, Happy Military Children's Month. Tomorrow is my one, one-year anniversary, along with Sarah Gerloff, of speaking to this Board. I came here because I heard about CRT and wanted to speak as a person who'd been in a mixed marriage for 37 years to say, as does Lieutenant Governor Sears, that the world is no longer the same as it was decades ago regarding race. I thought you were all sweetly naive. I thought you were all sweetly naive. But as I stood in the hallway waiting to speak, looking at your murals, one for each academic year reflecting the priorities of each year, I saw the gradual emphasis on equity grow and the decline in the emphasis on academic excellence. I realized the CRT then was a push politically intentional, not innocent, and I felt called to fight. I have since witnessed your need to shut down the voices of those who speak truth with your attack on the First Amendment and our right to speak, as truth is the enemy of the tyranny that you all practice. I'm reminded of a parable by President Zelensky of the Ukraine when he spoke of a tyrannical emperor who wanted to shut down the voice of an effective person of opposition. Zelensky said that the emperor had a two-step approach. First step, you cut out their tongue. Second step, you do whatever you want. You have revived methods of doing the emperor's approach. You disparage the characters of those who speak truth against you by sending them letters, assaulting and demeaning their character, claiming they are physical threats to all here, clearly a lie. Then you limit their access to the school board. You take these actions because you're afraid, you don't trust your own judgment. You took this action against Sarah Gerloff, sending her a letter limiting her access and questioning her mental stability after she spoke truthfully at the school board about an issue regarding the legality of Dr. Spence and his status as superintendent with his non-approved company, Edge and Navigate, and previously unapproved AASA. An insulting letter was sent to her by Dr. Robertson, but still she spoke, so the next step was Dr. Spence hired a lawyer to stop her words. All you want to do in essence is to cut out her tongue and deny her free speech. Now you have sent a letter to the five-foot-two Annie Palumbo claiming you fear her as a physical threat, denying her access to the building for a year. Why? You have security guards here, and you're not physically afraid. You are actually displaying a cowardice born of what you really fear, that she has brought attention to what goes on here, the brainwashing of children, as she has lately been speaking passionately and forcefully about the truth of pornography fed to our children in your schools. You are afraid because she brings media attention to your damaging policies, so you do what tyrannical emperors do. You cut out her tongue. You should all be ashamed, but you're not.
And that is time. Our next speaker is Tara Chang, Sarah Gerloff, and Kathleen Slindy.
Good evening.
As a child who was raised as a, as someone who was raised as a military child, I would like to thank all the military children this month. I find it concerning, but not shocking, that in this month, Chief Academic Officer Kip Rogers and Superintendent Aaron Spence would approve books that would walk against values of our great nation as written in our Constitution and Declaration of Independence. They post books working against what our military has fought for. I'll be showing this with a book, A is for Activist, approved in the Virginia Beach Public Schools, that is riddled with leftist propaganda. While T is for trans, L is for LGBTQ, and U is for union in this book, what disturbed the most is what M stood for. Now, knowing that Virginia Beach has a large military community, one would suspect M would be for Memorial Day, right? Nope, you're wrong. Rogers and Spence are teaching your children that M is for May Day, a socialist holiday. Next, to all the parents struggling to fill their tanks up with gasoline to bring their children to school, Spence and Rogers are teaching your children that S is for silly selfish gondrels for driving vehicles sucking on gasoline, which the book calls dinosaur sludge. Your child is sitting there thinking that you are silly and selfish because of what Spence and Rogers insists on indoctrinating your child. Now, Donald Robertson, this one is for you. The last time I showed this image, you wanted to cover up so much that you had me thrown out of the meeting. That was on video. This book finishes with Z is for Zapatista, a socialist militant liberation army. To make a point, they were wearing masks. So to quote Vladimir Zelensky, well, your books and curriculum hurts the children of Virginia Beach. So to quote Vladimir Zelensky, "Spence and Rogers, only cowards want to hurt children." Have a good day.
Our next speaker is Sarah Gerloff, Kathleen Slindy, and then Conrad Shrevesvender.
Good evening.
Good evening. The Virginia Beach City Public School slogan is "Charting the Course." It appears to me the majority of the vessels on this school board have drifted way off course. Our schools have been taking on water at an alarming rate, with Spence and this bored school board majority at the helm. Over the past six years, I have noticed a problem with teenage girls and boys distributing naked photos of themselves to each other. Teenagers do not always make the best decisions and need guidance and consequences when they exhibit behavior such as this. The schools have been stepping in with disciplinary action in these cases. I would like to know why the schools are disciplining kids for distributing obscene matter, but Dr. Spence has been allowed to distribute what most reasonable adults would consider obscene and pornographic material without consequences. I did some research on laws that cover this, here's what I found. Quote, "The illegal act of exposing a minor to obscene images occurs through the visual representation of any depiction, such as drawings, photos, images, and video, and even cartoons and paintings. These images must show the minor some form of sexual activity in action," end quote. The images in gender queer clearly show sexual activity in action. We have all seen the pictures, and there is no denying it. Rules of obscenity also cover written or even spoken words that influence or harm another. We have heard the obscene description from "The Bluest Eye" of a father raping his daughter. These are just two of the obscene books distributed to our schools under Spence and the majority on this board. Through federal law, quote, "It is illegal to transfer, distribute, trade, or sell items of obscene material, especially to minors. It is also illegal to aid and abet in the commission of these crimes, and individuals who commit such acts are also punishable under federal obscenity laws," end quote. Why are Spence and members of this board allowed to blatantly commit crime after crime without consequences? It seems these days only some laws are enforced some of the time on some of the people, not very equal treatment of the law. The majority of this board should have listened to Vicky Manning when she began voicing her concerns years ago about Spence's content of character, but instead you tried to silence her. Now you have distributed obscene matter to minors, a federal offense. Dr. Martin Luther King said, quote, "We must learn that passively to accept an unjust system is to cooperate with that system and thereby become a participant in its evil," end quote. What he meant by this is that if you know wrongdoing is occurring, but you don't speak out, you are guilty of evil since you helped perpetuate it. Any teacher, principal, librarian, anyone that knows these obscene books are being distributed to minors and does nothing is guilty. And because of that, you're allowing evil to continue.
Our next speaker is Kathleen Slindy, then Conrad Shrevesvender, and Mary Hoffer.
Good evening. Good evening, Chairwoman Ry, Vice Chair Melnick, school board members, and Dr. Spence, sorry. My name is Kathleen Slindy, I'm president of the Virginia Beach Education Association. My comments this evening are about getting and keeping VB CPS fully staffed for next year. Last week, a school district near us proposed a 10% increase for teachers, a 14% increase for ESPs, and even a 5% increase for administrators if more funds are allocated in the state budget. Add to that the fact that their experience scale has a 1.5% increase each year, and you will know why I had emails, calls, and conversations asking what VB CPS is going to do to keep educators here. Recognizing that VB CPS has made changes to address these differences, there's still a lot more to do. Employees are making career decisions for next year. We need them to stay and continue to provide the excellent instruction, vital support, and services our students need. Our schools need to be fully staffed next year. So I'm asking, in light of what competing school districts are doing, what is VB CPS going to do to make this the place to be working? Can a 1.5% step be implemented here? The Division has addressed salary compression, but is it enough? In this case, slow and steady may not win the race. What are the real dollar differences for employees' premium payments with the changes in the health benefits program? Do the TAs know what the new reclassifications will mean for their paychecks? Who's getting this information to them? Bus drivers, cafeteria assistants, custodians, and security assistants? How will this budget affect their paychecks? Employees cannot make informed decisions without information like this. Is what you're doing really helping struggling teachers improve so they can continue to grow as professionals and to increase our retention? Well, the unfortunate truth is that no one can really realistically answer these questions or implement additional incentives until the budget is approved by city council or denied. And beyond that, no additional incentives can be added to the school division's budget until the General Assembly finalizes the state budget. We all know this. It would be great if either one of us had the power to make this happen. Meanwhile, we wait, and employees have to make decisions about next year and affecting their family's well-being and VB CPS's staffing. So we need to be united in our efforts to support public education. Employees and employers, parents and business leaders, all advocating together for the funding to meet all the needs of our students,
Thirty seconds.
social and emotional, academic, health, and nutritional. We are doing important work here. In addition to advocating for our members' needs, the VBA actively advocates for public education to get SOQs fully funded and to make sure legislators understand that mandating a program without fully funding it is not responsible governing. Our work makes a difference, and partnering together can further the goal to create the best educational workplace Virginia has to offer. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Conrad Shrevesvender, and then Mary Hoffer.
Good evening.
Virginia Beach School Board, I'll read a Community Action Team message. We at the 757 Battle Cats developed a quarterly report card tracking incumbent candidates of 2022. Here's the rubric. Political knowledge: The candidate doesn't make incorrect statements. Quality of work: The candidate attends 80% of meetings and offers one to two inputs per meeting. Communication: The candidate provided two or more publicly accessible messages of a political nature. Political ethics: Measuring candidate misconduct. Community-city ratio: Elected should champion a minimum of three initiatives to help the black and brown communities versus general city interest. A two-to-one score being a good level. Political teamwork: Electeds have a minimum three-fifths of votes helping set communities in a nonpartisan manner. Leadership: Electeds should have proactive measures addressing new and long-term problems via public presentations, public advocacy, hosting community meetings, and other engagements. Legislation: Measuring elected's production and advocacy for new policy that promotes and protects equity, equality, and progress. The max score is 40; 25 is considered satisfactory. The Battle Cats will review the Board and produce this card quarterly. In our current 2022 measure, all incumbent candidates were high in political knowledge. Most were lacking in communication, none were strong in legislation. There's a lot that remains desired across the board.
Excuse me, if you're talking about the school board members versus those up for election, can we be clear that we're staying clear of elections?
Up for electeds, yeah.
No, I thought you were referring to electeds, which is all of us. And as long as you stick to that, but you can't get into who is and isn't running for office. And is that clear?
Yes, I'll try my best to clarify that. We remember the black community wasn't too forthright about their demands, at least until the summer of 2020. As a non-black member of the Community Action Team and current candidate for Virginia Beach's City Council District Ten, I support this aggressive shift. I encourage watching and listening to the study of the Community Action Team.
We cannot get into politics or campaigns. This is K-12 education and school board member performance, okay?
Yes, I'll just leave this with the clerk.
Thirty seconds. Our next speaker is Mary Hoffer.
Welcome.
Hi. I think it's safe to assume that everybody in this room has seen the movie Mean Girls. If you have, I'm sure you remember the scene where the burn book created by the Mean Girls was made public containing cruel and mean things about fellow classmates and teachers. The principal holds an emergency meeting in the gym, and one asks all to raise their hand that have been victimized or felt victimized or been made fun of by Regina George, the ringleader of the Mean Girls. All raise their hands. Fast forward to 2022, there is no burn book, there is no Regina George. There are apps like TikTok, Snapchat, and Instagram, and there are school kids and internet connections. The modern-day burn book is substantially more dangerous and harmful, created anonymously by kids as young as sixth grade. I found out yesterday, accounts were created using the VB middle school logo and under usernames referencing VBMS to slander and expose fellow students. I won't get into the details of every video, but I was shocked to browse the accounts that followed, liked, or commented on these videos. Some of these kids as young as 12 are exposed to, and posting themselves was unsettling. I myself downloaded the Bark app on my daughter's phone after catching her downloading Snapchat a few times. I'm not saying she's a saint, but after asking her not to, she did it. I'm not standing here because I have a solution. I don't, nor am I blaming parents, kids, or schools. You cannot take on the internet and win, it's too big. What you can do, though, is start at home, in our local communities and schools. This is where our kids spend the majority of their time. Kids and parents, teachers, need to be educated on the potential dangers of these apps. The questions that I have are: If kids' personal BYOD devices are not connected to school Wi-Fi and use cellular data at school, do they have access to those apps? Children create VPNs, virtual private networks, in order to connect to these apps in school. You can do it in a matter of minutes. I would ask, does VB CPS have the right equipment and staff to monitor this workaround? Keeping up with blacklisting IPs is almost impossible. If videos are made at school visually in classrooms and posted on these apps later, does it count as a violation during school hours? The BYOD policy guidelines state may not be used during the instruction to access stored data, access private internet connections, or other form of electronic communications. Is it time for a policy upgrade? That policy was put into place in 2012, and TikTok was created in 2015. I am here imploring and begging parents, look at your child's phone. Download the parental monitoring apps, invade their privacy. The internet has already invaded ours. This is happening all around us. What is being done by the school to protect our children and teachers?
Madam Chair, that was our last speaker for this evening.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So that brings us to the Information section of the agenda, and we welcome Mr. Daniel Hopkins with interim financial statements.
Good evening. Chairwoman Ry, Vice Chairwoman Melnick, school board members, Dr. Spence. As of February, the overall revenue trend remains acceptable at this point in the fiscal year. The General Assembly did not approve the governor's amended budget. We are now waiting for the governor to call a special session to approve, get the budget approved. And as soon as final legislation action happens, we will get that information to you. Federal revenues are showing an acceptable trend at this point in the fiscal year. We have received impact aid payments of approximately $10 million. The next graph shows that sales tax receipts are acceptable at this point in the fiscal year. Year-to-date through February, we are approximately $7.5 million higher than the same time last year. In the month of March, we're about $300,000 higher than the same month of March last year. The last graph shows that the expenditures and encumbrances trend continues to be acceptable at this point in the fiscal year. At this point, I'll take any questions.
Looks like we're set for now, thank you. Now we have Dr. Ronnie Myers-Dobb, and it's the 2022-23 Special Education Annual Plan and Flow Through Application.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Chair Ry, Vice Chair Melnick, school board members, and Dr. Spence. I am Ronnie Myers-Dobb, the Executive Director of the Office of Programs for Exceptional Children, and I'm here this evening to provide information pertaining to the Division's Special Education Annual Plan, Part B Flow Through Application and Report, which is often referred to as the Annual Plan. Tonight's presentation is an annual requirement to inform you of how we intend to spend allocated federal funds based on the requirements outlined in the application. Local educational agencies are required to submit this application each year according to the federal provisions of the Individualized to the federal provisions of the Individualized with Disabilities Education Act of 2004, as well as state regulations governing special education programs for children with disabilities. Prior to the submission to the Virginia Department of Education, each school division must review its annual plan with its local Special Education Advisory Committee, also known as SEAC, and submit it to the local school board for approval. SEAC Chair Doty McGuire is here with us this evening and will provide the board with the committee's response to the plan later in the presentation. This annual review is critical because the dispersment of federal funds appropriated for the education of children with disabilities is contingent upon the approval of the plan and its components. Part of this application includes verification of adherence to a list of assurances delineated by the Virginia Department of Education for all public school divisions. Assurances such as the examples listed on this slide are examples of actions required by the application to main compliance with federal and state regulations governing special education programs for children with disabilities. The terms "free appropriate public education" and "individualized education program" are often heard in the field of special education. These two concepts are specific to each child qualifying for special education services. As each child's IP is developed and reviewed by the IP team, determination is made about the supports and services needed to ensure access to the general curriculum and, to the maximum extent appropriate, the student being educated with peers without disabilities in the least restrictive environment. In addition, the school division has policies and procedures designed to prevent the over-identification or disproportionate representation by race and ethnicity of children with disabilities. So those are just some examples of those insurances. In addition to the statement of assurances, the annual plan requires divisions to submit information about select special education programs and expenditures. One required component is information about the division's JAIL Education Program, or JEP. State regulations mandate that special education services be provided to incarcerated youth with disabilities who are in our local jail, the Virginia Beach Correctional Center. Such services are delivered according to the students' IPs by special education teachers. The Maintenance of Effort, or MOE, is the requirement of each school division to spend at least the same local or local and state funds for the education of children with disabilities on a year-to-year basis. And then the Proportionate Set-Aside, or PSA, is the requirement for each local school division to set aside a specific federal dollar amount to be used for children with disabilities who are permanently placed in private schools within our jurisdiction. And these set-aside funds are used for services for these students. So each year, our division hosts the required collaborative consultation session with participating Virginia Beach private schools to determine how best to use the federal set-aside funds. And as in the past, these funds will be used for the provision of speech and language services due to the strong linkage between speech and language skills and overall literacy. The annual plan also requires a recap of the division's use of its federal funds for the prior fiscal year, as well as our anticipated expenditures for the upcoming fiscal year. And the division uses the federal funds for the intended purposes of the grant, which includes expenditures for personnel, as well as materials and equipment and professional development opportunities. So this slide breaks down our annual plan's projected budgets for the 2022-23 Part B Section 611 and 619 grant funds. And the Virginia Department of Education has not yet released the official allocations by locality for next year, and divisions are asked to prepare a budget based on level funding for the current year. Our recommended budget is summarized in this chart, and these funds represent approximately 15% of the division's special education funding. Part B 611 Flow Through, also known as the Title VI B Grant, will continue to support current personnel and benefits. And then Part B Section 619, which is the Early Childhood Special Education, also known as the Preschool Incentive Grant, will continue to support current personnel, benefits, material supplies and professional development for early childhood special education teachers. The indirect costs for both were calculated at the current rate of 2.2%, and the full details are in the annual plan application. So as noted earlier, each school division must review its Special Education Annual Plan Part B Flow Through Application with SEAC prior to submission of the plan to the school board and subsequently VDOE. On February 22nd, the plan was shared with the SEAC's Policy Subcommittee, and at the March 14th SEAC Evening Meeting, the Policy Subcommittee garnered SEAC support to move the plan forward. So now, I invite Mrs. McGuire to the podium to provide the board members with the committee's response to the proposed plan.
Thank you. And welcome to you, Ms. McGuire.
Thank you, appreciate it. Good evening, Dr. Spence, Chairperson Rye, Vice Chairperson Melnick, and the rest of the school board members. I am Doty McGuire, Chairperson of the Special Education Advisory Committee this year. I'm here tonight on behalf of the SEAC to recommend that you approve the 2022-2023 Special Education Annual Plan Part B Flow Through Application that has been submitted to you this evening by the Office of Programs for Exceptional Children. As required in the Regulations Governing Special Education Programs for Children with Disabilities in Virginia, the SEAC's Policy Review Subcommittee, pardon me, has participated in a comprehensive review of the local Special Education Annual Plan and application through collaboration with the Office of Programs for Exceptional Children. The SEAC determined that the local Special Education Annual Plan Part B Flow Through Application submitted complies with the requirements in the current federal and state regulations and appropriately identifies the responsibilities pertaining to students with disabilities in Virginia Beach City Public Schools. Please feel free to contact myself or other SEAC members concerning our role in the review if you have any other questions.
And actually, we'll offer that opportunity on the spot if you don't mind. Thank you, both ladies.
Oh, okay. I thought you were serious there for a minute.
Oh, I am.
She is. So if the board members have any questions at this time, we are here to answer those questions.
Yes, we are.
I'm going to defer all questions to you.
All right, we'll start with Mrs. Manning.
Well, first, I want to thank you, Ms. McGuire, for taking on the role of leading the SEAC and all the volunteers, all the parents that put in so much time for this very, very important committee. So thank you so much. I had a question from a community member just a couple of days ago who had seen a reduction in our budget for the, it was the line item of special education regional programs, I think. Funding had been cut by a couple of million dollars on that one, and I think that there may have been some issues going on with CSEP and how that's funded. Is that?
So that's not part of this application, but there is, it's called a CISTNA, so it's a whole application process in which we have to gather data and determine those students that are eligible to receive the funds from VDOE now, and there is criteria specified. So they have to have, they have to be identified by certain disabilities. They also have to have 85% of their day as receiving special education services. So before, we used to just submit the names and we would get refunded based on tuition, provided the names that CSEP provided, but now we have to submit this application and we do receive considerably less reimbursement as a result of this application process.
Okay, and that's through the VDOE?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I'll just, the add-on to that, and we talked a little bit with the board about this something a year or two back, was that VDOE's intention was to broaden the number of regional programs and to not expand the amount of funding, but to distribute that funding more broadly. And that's what you're seeing. That's why that application came about.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, but we will take up future outreach if needed. Then, please thank your team of volunteers at your next meeting on all our behalf.
I will definitely do that. We have some excellent people on the SEAC this year, and we hope that they are able to return next year.
Plug.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Okay, please, first, and I don't want to miss, please pronounce your last name for us.
Siders.
Didn't know which vowel is silent, which is okay. So Ms. Angela Siders is here to present on journal, New Course Journalism IV.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, Chairwoman Rye, Vice Chair Melnick, members of the school board and Dr. Spence. I'm here this evening to present information about a new course at the high school level for which I'm seeking your approval. Journalism IV is a course which offers continued practical experience in print and online media for the trained journalist through a workshop format in newspaper reporting and editing. The prerequisite for this course is Journalism I, II and III. While in this course, students will exhibit leadership skills by producing, editing, publishing and managing articles for student newspaper publications. They bear the personal responsibility for understanding the ethics and laws, and finally, they will produce a culminating portfolio of his or her journalism career. This will give students the opportunity to demonstrate their growth as a journalist. While in Journalism IV, students will explore four main learning objectives. First of all, they're going to become familiar with history and the legal and ethical aspects of journalism. They're going to learn the role of mass communication within our society and world. They're going to demonstrate proficiency in a variety of journalistic writing styles, and then they're going to familiarize themselves with available resources pertaining to computer software, photography and other technology which enhance production and increase impact on the publication. Journalism IV supports Goal 3.1 to expand authentic learning opportunities and Goal 1.5 to ensure their explicit connections with the five Cs in the graduate of Virginia Beach City Schools Strategic Action Plan Compass 2025. Through this course, students will exhibit their ability to communicate and collaborate, think and inquire, as well as problem solve and create. Finally, in support of flexible scheduling next year, students who are enrolled in Journalism III during Term I will be able to continue in a higher-level journalism course by taking Journalism IV during Term II. This will also be reflected on their student transcript. By offering Journalism IV, it supports the needs of our students by challenging them into rigorous coursework. There is no budgetary impact by offering this additional course. We ask that you consider approving Journalism IV as a new course for the 2022-23 school year. Thank you for considering this proposal. I would now like to invite Kami Vatterston-Jacob, Secondary English Coordinator, joining me via Zoom to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So well, maybe I'll start, though, and ask, so for how, we've had Journalism I, II and III for how long?
We've, I'm not sure. Kami, if you're on the phone, do you know how long we've had?
Yes, hi there.
Good evening and welcome. Yes.
Thank you, thank you. We've had Journalism I, II and III for many, many years. I've been with the division for 14 years, and I can tell you that's how long we've had it.
Okay, so what prompted us to now take a leap to this step with the fourth level?
Sure. Thank you for asking that question. If you recall, when we went to four-by-four last year to accommodate the needs due to COVID, students that were enrolled in Journalism III took it during Term I, which was what you would think of as the old semester one, which was September through January, when they wanted to continue taking Journalism, and there wasn't a Journalism IV course for them to take. So they enrolled in an independent study course to continue their work with Journalism, and that was one of the reasons that prompted the need for Journalism IV.
Thank you. Mrs. Anderson?
This may be a bit premature, but was there any thought into making this somehow a dual enrollment-type course?
Not, go ahead, Kami.
We look into that, and I don't believe TCC offers that at this time, but it is something that we can consider in the future and look into that.
Thank you. Yes, once it's approved, we'll look into that.
Okay.
So if I may get back to, so we said we, Journalism I, II and III have been present for over a decade. Is that at all of our high schools? Because I see here about over five high schools interested in offering Journalism IV, so that's what sparked my question.
I believe usually if the course makes at the schools, if the course makes at the school if their student interest. So for example, Kami, I don't know if every school has Journalism I, II and III, but evidently we have very many that do because it's prompted the student interest to want Journalism IV.
Correct, and Journalism II and III are often combined into one class.
Was this a case where we might offer, and I'm dating myself with the term distance learning, but if I'm at Salem High School that doesn't have it, but Tallwood does, would there be a means to transmit it in or out?
I think that's something else that we can look into and consider. I do know that students work very closely with their teachers to actually do the publications piece of it, and so that might prove to be a little bit of a challenge, but the non-publication piece, working with the portfolio and other experiences, might be doable, but it's something we can look into.
Okay, this will be on for consent next meeting?
All right, thank you very much.
And now we welcome Ms. Melissa Ingram in her new position. Congratulations. And to discuss the disposition of our school board-owned property, the Lask, otherwise known as the Lasken Road Annex.
Good evening, and thank you very much for the congrats. Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, members of the board and Dr. Spence. With me today is Becky Kubin, Deputy City Attorney. On the agenda today, we have a disposition of property at Lasken Road Annex. It's roughly a 12.41 acre site at 1413 Lasken Road. In your agenda packet, you have a resolution and a purchase agreement, which are the result of a joint city and schools RFP process, which included our own Ms. Sharon Felton and City Council's Guide Tower. The purchase agreement shows a full price offer of $7 million from the Franklin Johnston Group for proposed mixed-use development on the site. Looking at the disposition schedule, we are presenting today for information, the offer for purchase. We have a public hearing scheduled for April 5th, and then we have action scheduled for April 26th to execute the purchase agreement and resolution declaring the property surplus. City Council will be able to take action on the item May 3rd or later, taking action on whether to declare the property surplus and whether or not to allow the school board to retain funds from the sale. The property is currently zoned A12, and the offer will be submitting a rezoning application to the Planning Department to rezone to conditional B4, allowing the mixed-use development proposed for the Hilltop SGA area and associated with the RFP process. The proposed mixed-use project will be a mix of residential and commercial to include office, restaurant and retail. City Council will take up the rezoning application after the rezoning is considered and voted upon by Planning Commission in early summer. As you can see from our schedule here, the property will continue to undergo site plan review with the city enforcing applicable codes and proffers from the conditional rezoning. The closing of sale will be approximately 420 days after the signed agreement, unless an earlier option is exercised. This process is similar to our last dispositions for the former CEEL on Witch Duck Road and the old ALC on Virginia Beach Boulevard. Our next slide shows the property, again located at 1413 Lasken Road, which used to be the old Linkhorn Park Elementary School. Most recently, this building was used for administrative offices, which have all moved to the Plaza Annex when that addition was complete, thus making this property excess. Throughout the course of development review, the developer will be dedicating easements as well as reserving an area for the pump station to be enlarged as part of their development planning. And I'm happy to answer any questions you all might have.
Thank you, Ms. Ingram. Thank you, Ms. Ingram, and we'll start with Mrs. Manning.
Thank you. So just to be clear, if the public has any questions on rezoning, they should contact City Council, correct?
Absolutely, yes. So a rezoning app.
I know, I, I anticipate that's going to be a question. I just want to make it clear that the school board can't control the zoning aspects of it.
Absolutely.
Is the sale conditioned on the rezoning of the property?
Um, yes, the rezoning of the property would allow the developer to go to the B four conditional, which is in alignment with the proposal that was made during the RFP process.
But City Council has to approve any rezoning, so if, if City Council doesn't rezone it to what the developer wants, then the sale could fall through, correct?
That is possible, um, yeah, but however, they are, um, looking to, um, put in the application for rezoning April first. And we, and again, it was a very good joint RFP process with both city and school stakeholders. So hopefully that should be a, a fairly good process as well.
Take, if they're, if they're putting in April first, like how quickly would they know?
So they might be going to Planning Commission as early as June, um, possibly July if they have a little bit more to do, and then they go to City Council the next meeting after that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else, Mrs. Felton?
Thank you, Chair Rye. I'd just like to just make a statement, uh, just to thank you all for the opportunity to help work with you. And Mr. Freeman was there as well. I would like to say that, um, most of the interesting parties of this community was sitting at that table. It was a complex but fair, um, process that we went through. And what I most generally like about what we did, uh, we included every and any, um, local developer that was in the area. And I believe there's seven, seven of them that actually came to the table were local, um, developers. And I just had to say that, that went, fell well, well. And what we was asking and what the developers did, what we were asking for, um, input from the community. And that was one of the question that we did ask. I asked, did they go in the surrounding areas and talk and have survey? And that was met. We asked that question specifically to all of the developers and what they were doing as well. So I just had to say thank you for the opportunity. And I believe that it was a, it was complex, very rigorous. Us being at the table, city, school board members, uh, community were all represented there, but it was very fair. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Felton. Thank you for being part of the process. I think it, um, it, it could be a great project going forward. Thank you.
I'll echo that on behalf of, uh, our colleagues, Mrs. Felton. Thank you for those remarks. Okay, so then you all see the timeline here, again with the public hearing on April fifth and, and, uh, board action on April twenty sixth, just to recap. All right, okay, we thank you.
Thank you. Have a great evening.
Information, Item Twelve E, Policy Review Recommendations. Welcome, Mrs. Lanetti.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, School Board Members, and Dr. Spence. I'm Kami Lanetti, School Board Legal Counsel. And on behalf of the Policy Review Committee, I'll be presenting the recommendations from the March tenth, twenty twenty two P R C meeting. There are nine, uh, policies that are up for recommendation. Eight of them come from Section Seven, but the first one came to us from X, Section Three, which has to do with business services. This has to do with the school lunch and breakfast program. There were some changes to the law last year that needed to be incorporated into this particular, uh, policy. You will see those changes added to Section C, me, school meal availability. It talks about whether you can throw away food or take a meal away from a child. That was a very specific reference that was added to one of these, like, the news, uh, code sections out there. That actual language you see, and it's a little dramatic in this language, that is actually out of the statute. Has to do with school lunch shaming, and so we've incorporated wording exactly in the statute. We went ahead and renumbered under the unpaid meal charges. Another section that was added into the law last year, so the school board will not file a lawsuit against a student or student's parent legal guardians because the student cannot pay for a meal at a school or owes a school meal debt. So there've been questions on this area for a long time. That was specifically added to the, to the language last year. So we've gone ahead and incorporated those changes into this particular policy. Are there any questions about Policy Three Eighty Four?
Mrs. Manning.
Yeah, I'm just curious about that last section of language, you can't file a lawsuit. I'm just, yeah, how, how can you enforce people to pay for a meal? I mean, if they have the ability to pay, obviously we have methods to be able to help people who can't afford to pay for their meals. Um, but if there are people who can't afford to pay for their meals and they're not paying for them, what enforcement mechanism do that, do we have? What, what if everybody just said, they're not enforcing it, I'm not going to pay, and we don't get any money?
That could be a problem. We've obviously sent them a bill. We would ask them to pay. We would encourage them to pay. What we are going to be limited to doing is the ability to file a lawsuit against them.
Ms. Lanetti, turning it over to City Collections is not a lawsuit, correct?
It depends if they file, file a lawsuit. If they could, they would send a bill initially, but at some point they usually do turn it over to attorneys. Um, a lot of times, sometimes it might, it's generally, it is handed over to private attorneys to go after that and they file it in the small claims court to go after it. So we no longer, under the statute, have the ability to do that. So we're making efforts ahead of time to try to get that money back.
Kindly ask, but there's no way.
Let me just probe a little bit for further clarification, because this says the school board is not going to file a lawsuit. Generally speaking, if we are able to turn this over to the City Treasurer's Office for collection, correct?
Correct, but it's on behalf of the school board that you be, the money be returning to you, so that's limitation.
Okay, we probably need to explore the legal ramifications of that statement.
Yeah, thank you.
Cause I'm not, uh, cause I, I mean, we, we turn it over to them and they do collections. It doesn't always involve a lawsuit. Uh, that's only kind of if they get to the end of their processes, correct?
Correct.
So we can still do that piece of it, although we've tried not to do that. We have worked very hard with a lot of our adjustments to our practices to avoid that anyway, but with our, you know, our brown bag lunches and those things, but.
Well, and for the last year, you haven't been charged.
Well, we haven't had to, right. Of course, those waivers are no longer extended as of, I think, December, so. That'll change the process for us. We'll go back to having to charge for lunches, but.
Okay, yeah, if you wouldn't mind, just if we can look into that a little bit and with more information at the next meeting. Thank you.
For clarification, you're not asking to pull that, you're just asking for more clarification.
Yeah, maybe put it on action instead of.
Okay, all right.
Moving on to Policy Seven Five, Section Seven has to do with our community aspects and facility, certain facilities. On Section Fi- Seven Five has to do with, is, uh, new school division wide in individual schools. We've made some minor scrivenor changes. You'll see we've corrected some titles and we'll correct to the name of the department for me, Communications and Community Engagement and just some updated scrivenotes. So there are no significant changes to Policy Seven Five. Are there any questions about Policy Seven Five? Hearing no questions about Policy Seven Five, we'll move on to Policy Seven Fourteen, Advertising in Schools. The corrections, there's some minor corrections in Section D, adding some, um, areas that we've not had to deal with before. Marijuana vaping products, things that have come into law in the last couple of years, we've changed some of that on there. The bigger changes see come in Section F, which is political advertising. There's a correction to the second paragraph, talking about where you can do campaign literature. And again, we've noted on here that if there's a polling place on our school property, which many of our properties do have polling places, that you are allowed to distribute the campaign materials when it's, uh, polling places and open to the public. And that there are no significant changes made to this policy. Are there any questions of pol- about Policy Seven Fourteen? Hearing no further questions, I'll move on to Policy Seven Forty. Seven Forty is performances by students. There's only one minor change, recommend the very last sentence, just changing, uh, this is public office. We've added to public office holders. Other than that, there are no significant changes to Policy Seven Forty. There are no questions about Seven Forty. I'll move on to Policy Seven Forty One. This is contest for students. Again, there are minor scrivenor changes added out here to, to, um, increase the names of organizations or principals and designees. Other than that, there are no significant changes that are recommended for Policy Seven Forty One. Are there any questions about Policy Seven Forty One? Hearing no questions about Policy Seven Forty One, we'll move on to Policy Seven Forty Five. There are more significant changes to this particular policy. This is Policy Seven Forty Five, recognition of students and staff by the school board. You'll see where we have added two subsections. We have spelled out the recognition criteria that are now going to be, uh, used for those recon- recognitions we have during school board meetings and how you submit names for recognition. And there'll just, there's, you will have a new subsection A, having to do with recognition criteria that include, that include the, the five categories you see listed there. There'll be a new subsection B, submission of names for recognition and how you do that. Again, those are minor scrivenor changes that have to do with the new section B. Are there any questions about Policy Seven Forty Five? Hearing no questions about Policy Seven Forty Five, we'll move on to Policy Seven Fifty Two, use of school board equipment, use of school board buses. You'll see a change in subsection A, one eligible organizations. We've gone ahead and updated to reflect the language that is actually in the statute, having to do with those organizations, um, under the Older Americans Act that can be used. And noted that there are mandatory language and supplement issues that have to do with using buses on it. That language is in the statute. It was not in our policy, so we went ahead and added it into our policy. And we've added under Section B, which talks about the contractual agreements for using school board buses. We've added number six on there, just noting that the superintendent doesn't authorize to waive or add additional contract terms that are not required by law, policy regulation. We don't do as much of the use of the school buses, uh, contracts, but it does come up periodically and sometimes we need to change those contract terms to meet the arrangements that we have. So those are the recommendations for Policy Seven Fifty Two. Are there any questions about Seven Fifty Two? Hearing no questions about Policy Seven Fifty Two, I will move on to Seven Fifty Five, which is fees for use of school facilities. There are only minor scrivenor changes in here, removing the editor's notes. There are no further recommendations for Seven Fifty Five other than what you see here. There are no questions about Seven Fifty Five, I will move on to Seven Fifty Six. Seven Fifty Six is concession stands on school property. Again, there are only minor scrivenor changes that are made to this in the second paragraph. Uh, they're just clarifying some additional language that's needed. And that there are no significant changes that are recommended to Policy Seven Fifty Six. Are there any questions about Seven Fifty Six? Hearing no question about Seven Fifty Six, that is the end of the recommendations of the Policy Review Committee for last month.
Thank you. We'll look forward to seeing these in two weeks. All right, Consent Agenda. The following items are presented this evening as part of the Consent Agenda. Uh, three resolutions, National Month of the Military Child, Mathematics Awareness Month, School Library Media Month, and National Library Week. And then we have Section B, Recommendation of a General Contractor. First Colonial High School HVAC Partial Roof Replacement Music Wing. So we will, uh, now proceed with reading our resolutions.
Yep, Mrs. Anderson.
I have a resolution for National Month of the Military Child in April Twenty Twenty Two. This resolution is dear to my heart as my children were military chil- military, come from a military family, and now my grandchildren are moving all over the world with the military. So this really brings, uh, close to home for me. Whereas approximately thirteen thousand students enrolled in Virginia Beach City Public Schools are military connected, with the majority having at least one parent serving on active duty or in the reserves of the armed forces. And whereas these military connected youth and their family have unique needs and face distinct challenges due to high mobility, lengthy deployments of one or both parents, and the stresses of loved ones serving in times of combat. And whereas the school division reaffirms its commitment to providing support, resources, and enriching programs to enhance the educational experiences of military connected youth. And whereas the Virginia Beach City Public School Board's compass to Twenty Twenty Five, strategic plan creates opportunities to actively engage military connected parents and families in supporting student achievement and outcomes for success. And whereas April has been recognized by the Department of Defense since nineteen eighty six as the month of the military child, now therefore be it resolved that the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach officially recognizes April as the month of the military child. And be it further resolved that the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach encourages all school staff to initiate, support, and participate in special activities to recognize the exceptional role and unique sacrifices of our military connected youth make, that our military connected youth make in our nation's best interests. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread across the official minutes of this board, adopted by the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach this twenty second day of Ma- March, Twenty Twenty Two.
Thank you, Mrs. Anderson. Now, Mrs. Hughes.
Um, I'm reading for Mathematics Awareness Month. Whereas the National Council of Teachers of Mathematics recognizes April as Mathematics Awareness Month. And whereas mathematical literacy is essential for all and the inclusion of such in mathematics education ensures a culture of equity where students are empowered by the opportunities math affords. And whereas mathematics is an essential skill, both in life and in the workplace. And whereas mathematical reasoning, sense-making, problem-solving, and communication are essential skills. And whereas the language and processes of mathematics are basic to all other disciplines. And whereas our expanding techno- technologically based society demands increased awareness and competence in, in mathematics. And whereas school curricula in mathematics provide the foundation for meeting the above needs. Now therefore be it resolved that the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach designate April Twenty Twenty Two as Mathematics Awareness Month in Virginia Beach City Public Schools. And be it further resolved that the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach encourage all citizens and especially our children and young adults to continue mathematics studies and to understand how its application will relate to the occupations of the twenty first century. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread across the official minutes of this board, adopted by the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach this twenty second day of March, Twenty Twenty Two.
Thank you, Mrs. Hughes. And Mrs. Franklin, our final resolution of the evening?
Thank you. The Resolution for School Library Media Month and National Library Week. Whereas school library media centers function as the information centers of the schools and provide for integrated interdisciplinary and school-wide learning activities. And whereas school library media programs provide students with innovative learning opportunities that support their growth toward future readiness as enquirers, critical thinkers, problem solvers, collaborators, and communicators. Whereas school library media programs promote informational literacy and the enjoyment of reading, viewing, and listening for young people of all ages and all levels of development. And whereas school library media programs provide resources and learning activities that represent a diversity of experiences, opinions, and social and cultural perspectives, supporting the concept that intellectual freedom and access to information are prerequisites to effective and responsible citizenship in a democracy. And whereas the city, for, I'm sorry, whereas the Virginia Beach City School Board recognizes the vital role that school library media centers play in the educational process. And whereas Virginia Beach Public Libraries and Virginia Beach School Libraries have formed a unique partnership that provides for the sharing of resources and services to the mutual benefit of all patrians, patriots. That now therefore be it resolved that the Virginia Beach City, City School Board reconfirm its belief in the value of the school library media program and officially recognize the month of April Two Thousand Twenty Two as School Library Media Month and the week of April th- uh, third through ninth, Two Thousand Twenty Two as National Library Week, calling their significance to the attention of all Virginia Beach citizens. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread across the official minutes of this board.
Thank you, Mrs. Franklin. So I will now call for a motion to approve the Consent Agenda items as presented. Mrs. Melnick, in a second, Mrs. Hughes. Okay, all in favor, show a raised hand, please.
Madam Chair, we have nine ayes. The motion passed to adopt the consented.
I had read, I read that initially.
No, no, great. Okay, please.
So we have eight ayes for the Consent Agenda as presented.
Better to be safe, thank you. Okay.
We have nine ayes.
I'm going to wait ten seconds. All right. Item fifteen, Action, Personnel Administrative Appointments. Uh, motion to approve, Mrs. Riggs, a second, Mrs. Felton, any discussion? All right, hearing none, uh, please, uh, sh- it, show your approval with a raised hand.
We have nine ayes, the motion did pass.
Thank you, and there are no, uh, uh, announcements to, uh, administrative appointments tonight speaking to that. So we, that li- brings us to our final, uh, business of the evening, Committee Organization and Board Reports. Who would like to begin? Mrs. Franklin?
I am speaking on behalf of Gifted CAC, Community Advisory Committee. Basically, at the request of the CAC, Mrs. Lynn Hodges from Title One presented an overview of the Title One and Pre-K Programs. The Gifted Leadership Team then shared the skill-building efforts specific to Title One K and one students through the Gifted Saplings Program.
and one students through the Gifted Sapiens Program that is implemented each year by Title One G R Ts. This program is designed to provide students and their parents with historical and cultural experiences while honing students' critical thinking skills and providing critical thinking strategies to parents for at-home use with students. This was really informative to me, um getting more in-depth about some Title One um programs. And I thought this was a really, really helpful um uh meeting to be involved with, so. And then I, I actually had the ability to go to Salem High School's Career Day, which was amazing. And I, as a military person, this was pretty exciting stuff. I was ready to, to uh, to join up again. But um, but the Army National Guard actually allows juniors to sign up as uh, as a student and already gets signed up as a Army National Guard. They get a mi- monthly stipend, and then between the junior and senior year, they um are able to go to boot camp. So I thought that was really interesting, something I had not known before. I'm really excited for people that, you know, are interested in going that route. Uh, of course, we have the enlist, employ, and enroll. And I thought that was really, really um interesting to know that they can already start enlisting already in uh high school. So that was really, really cool to, to experience in there. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mrs. Manning?
Um, so last um Thursday, I think it was, the seventeenth, we had our Mayor's Committee for Persons with Disabilities. Um, and one of my committee members is here with us as well, here in the back. Um, and Ms. Rye attended as well, the award ceremony, and it was so awesome. Um, it opened up with a musical program from a group called Vocal Inclusion. And they sang a song, song called I Have a Voice. If you've never heard it, please Google it. It is incredible, it's kind of an anti-bullying song. Um, and it's uh, the group, the Vocal Inclusion Group is for people with all abilities. And they just did such an awesome job. There were several V B C P S students that I know in the group as well. And um, so the awardees, it was Mutts with a Mission, it's an organization that trains, um, uh, volunteers train the dogs for, to give to service members and first responders um in need. And then Project Search that we had here with us here a few weeks ago, they were also given an award. So it was a pretty special event. Thank you, Ms. Rye, for also coming.
Yes, and and I'll, I'll go a step further just to, to reiterate that the, the suggestion arose with regard to liaison uh events such as this, that we might, we're going to be asking Madam Clerk to add these to our monthly school board calendar. Okay. Right, Mrs. Hughes?
I have Ms. Weems' report from C I A C. Um, she wanted everyone to know that she attended C I A C last week, and they had an occupational therapist from C H K D as a guest speaker, discussing sensory issues and challenges for some students, and that it was very informative and helpful, and she can expand on that more next meeting if you'd like.
Thank you, Mrs. Melnick.
Um, just a reminder that we have an audit committee meeting in this room on Thursday at one o'clock.
I'll speak on behalf again of the Virginia Beach Education Foundation, the Pearls of Wisdom event. It is if you're looking for an outdoor after event, the afternoon of April second, tickets are still available. Please reach out to Debbie Hughes at this point.
And that same night is Green Run Collegiate Gala.
Tag Jamie here.
Um, yeah, we, we have a lot of people coming and I'm really excited about our fundraising opportunities as I'm on the uh Foundation Board and the Governing Board, but great stuff at Green Run, and we'd love to have you join us um after you celebrate the Pearls of Wisdom.
All right, then, uh, this seems to conclude the business of the evening, so we are adjourned. Have a good.